Thank you all for joining us. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present. And just as a reminder, in accordance with board policy, our meetings follow Robert's Rules of Orders, Robert's Order, and according to that, the public, or the audience, has two opportunities to participate for three minutes per person. Basically, the way it works is you put in a card, which you can find in the back. The first opportunity is to speak on an agenda item only, and the second opportunity to speak on any other item that you wish to speak on. We do ask you all to respect those rules and not shout out. Anybody who disrupts the meeting will be asked to leave. But again, hopefully we won't get to that, thank you all for joining us. Okay. So, agenda items? Okay. Are there any members of the board wishing to speak on the agenda? Very much. Can I have a motion for the approval of minutes of the April 8th, 2021 regular meeting and the April 20th, 2021 planning session? So move.
Second.
Discussion.
I just have one point of order I'd like to make up. Oh, sorry about that. I think it is mine.
Okay.
Can you hear me now? Yeah? Okay. I just want to have one point of order with minutes. It's not reflected there, but Mr. McCann gave his Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting last month, and I took some exception to some of the details in those minutes. I just wanted to clarify that Mr. McCann's report was accurate and truthful, and that my remarks after that really were misconstrued, and I misinterpreted something he was saying. So I just wanted to clarify that point and set the record straight on that. Okay?
You're on this floor, so appreciate that.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, Mr. Taylor.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Reanna Fulton, Director of Instructional Information Technology, effective July 1st, 2021?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Judith Schwartz Elementary, effective July 1st, 2021, after 36 years?
So move. Thank you. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ms. McGellar, if I may?
Please.
My introduction to Mrs. Schwartz was when she was the MST teacher along with Mrs. Hollinger, and the first time I met her, she took a big box of, the only thing I could describe it with junk, and drew it on the desk in our newly initiated MST lab, and showed the little clip from Apollo 13, happens to be one of my favorite movies, and she talked about fitting a square peg in a round hole. And it was something that has stuck with me for all of the last, I guess, past 25 years, and I wish her well in her retirement. She has had an impact on her students and her colleagues and myself, and again, I wish her all the best.
I'd also like to just follow up with that as well. Mrs. Schwartz was MST teacher at West Brooklyn, my oldest, Kayla was there at kindergarten. And she inspired and just engaged the children in a way that really gave them movement in their minds. So, good luck and great job. Thank you.
We wish her the best. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of regular substitute scheduled music, effective May 10th, 2021 through June 30th, 2021?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Sandra Romaca, Computer Teaching Assistant, effective July 1st, 2021, after 20.5 years?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mrs. Romaca was one of our original teaching assistants that moved into the computer lab when we made that transition from all of those aides to those teaching assistants so many years ago. And certainly, she is one of those staff members that brought us where we are today. He's seen to our buildings as it relates to technology instructions. So thank you to Mrs. Romaca, and we wish her the very best.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Alexander McClanahan, Security aide, effective May 6th, 2021?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of substitute parent professional Kristen Barber, effective May 7th, 2021?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the small group instruction teacher as listed on the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the Adult Education Director and Secretary as listed on the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the enrichment director as listed on your agenda?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the enrichment instructors as listed on your agenda?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the Ural Road Middle School Clubs and Advisors as listed on your agenda?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
There is an addition to the agenda as discussed in Tuesday's Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. May I have a motion for the approval of the resolution to establish the maintenance substitute pay rate at $30 per hour?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mrs. Morrison, her killer update.
Thank you, Mr. McGellar. Thank you, Mr. McGellar. Good evening, everyone. Our elementary and middle school students recently completed the New York State ELA and math tests. The ELA test took place on April 22nd and April 20th, and the math test took place on May 6th and May 4th. Test refusal numbers were down this year compared to previous years. On the whole, the test refusal numbers for elementary ELA were 55.6%, and for middle school, 70.7%. In the area of math, test refusal numbers at the elementary level were 54.1%, and at the middle school level, 62.8%. We're all aware that our high school students will be taking four Regent's exams this year. A letter was recently shared with the high school parents and students in regards to how scores will be noted on the transcript. Students and parents have a choice. The district has informed everyone that our plan is to put mastery and above, grades of 85 or above, onto the transcript, and an E for any scores that are below mastery. However, if parents or students want something otherwise, they've been asked to please contact their child's school counselor, and we will make the accommodations that are requested. Students at the high school are enjoying an increased amount of time in the updated planetarium. Mr. Vitti and Mr. Rigerio are creating increased access to the planetarium on a daily basis. In additions to science classes, health classes are visiting the planetarium for full dome mindfulness presentations. English classes are visiting the planetarium for mythology presentations, and our life skills students visit the planetarium each week for full dome presentations related to their coursework. And just a congratulations to the class of 2021 that celebrated Senior Decision Day on Monday. All students were encouraged to come down to the school counseling office to write down the college that they will be attending in the fall on call print, and they're all displayed outside of the school counseling office. Staff and students also wore to school clothing that represented their college. Thank you, Mr. McGellar. Oh, excuse me, I have one more update, the UKK update. As Mrs. Pilati mentioned, the district is moving forward with the implementation of a full-day BPK program. We anticipate that there will be two pre-kindergarten classes in each of the buildings. We are anticipating that there will be 18 students in each class with one teacher and one aide. We are trying to decide right now the number of hours and actual school hours that the day will be, and we look forward to getting more definitive information out to the community in the next few weeks. Thank you, Mr. McGellar.
Thank you, Mrs. Morrison. And Mr. Antonello will discuss the meeting of the Education Committee.
Thank you, Mr. McGellar. Good evening, everybody. The Education Committee met yesterday, Tuesday, at 7:00 p.m., May 5th. In attendance included myself, other Education Committee members, Emory LaRosa, Anthony Tussi, Peter McCann, other board members in attendance, Mr. Steve McGellar, Mr. Tom Compatello, Mr. Ron McGinnis. Administrators in attendance, Mr. Brian Taylor, Mrs. Lisa Pilati, Mr. Bernard Burns, and Mr. Don Madison. The first item discussed was the printing of the June 2021 Regent's scores on the transcript. As was mentioned earlier, if the kids want these scored on the transcript, it's up to them. If not, an E will go on the transcript. To determine that, 85 plus would automatically go on the transcript unless otherwise directed. The second topic was the grade 3 through 8 ELA and math test. Refusals were down this year compared to the last time the test was given, 2019, the numbers mentioned by Mrs. Morrison. The third item discussed was the adjustment of the K-38 AMES web screening dates. They'll be done next month in June. The fourth item discussed was an update on Universal 3K. Full day will happen in September. There'll be two sections that are planned. Lots of parents switched their kids into full day. There's definitely enthusiasm in the district about it, all this with the help of increased state aid. Final topic of the meeting was a review, and my request by Mr. Morrison, of all the steps that the district has taken to address learning deficits that resulted from COVID restrictions in the past year, and the meeting concluded at 7:30.
Thank you, Mr. Antonello.
Mr. McGellar, I just have a minute, please.
Per.
While we're on the Education Committee, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just want to say to our teachers out there, we're grateful for all that you do every day, every year. However, nothing really compares to this year. It's a year in which we've all learned many new things. What isn't new is your professionalism and your dedication to our students' academic needs, and your sensitivity to their social emotional well-being. Especially this year, our students needed you more than ever, and you were there for them. Little can truly express our enormous gratitude for your countless good deeds, except perhaps two simple words: thank you.
Mr. McGinnis will discuss the meeting of the Finance Committee.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on May 4th. Meeting members present, Emory LaRosa, Peter McCann, and myself, other board members in attendance, Steve McGellar, Mr. Antonello, Tom Compatello, and Anthony Tussi. Administrators present, Superintendent Burns, Lisa Pilati, Ron Morrison, and Brian Taylor. Purpose of the meeting is always to review warrants for the month and discuss pertinent fiscal matters. This month, we reviewed the Schreger's reports for the month of March for the school district funds and the extracurricular funds. They were presented and accepted by the committee. Payroll summary report for April was presented and accepted by the committee. The financial statements and internal claims audit report for the month of March was presented and accepted by the committee, as was the system manager audit report for the month of April presented and accepted by the committee. Payroll certifications for the payroll period ending April 2nd, April 16th, and April 30th were presented and accepted by the committee, and the Finance Committee did receive the warrants for the month. We discussed several board agenda finance items, including the approval of budget transfers that were presented and accepted by the committee for the submission for the board tonight. Approval of surplus JVC compact disc system from Manitoc. Approval of a 2020-2021 Health Services contract for Deer Park School District for two students in the amount of $982. Two of them, one for $982 and the other for $1,964. Approval of the following contract for 2020-2021 for DaVinci Education and Research LLC, and for 2021-2022 for Metrotherapy, National Services, National Suffolk Services for Autism, and Eastern Suffolk Coasties contract for Cooperative Educational Services. We discussed the approval of bids for 2020-2021 for refrigeration and repair service, cheap use of an obstruction material, heating, ventilation, and AC service, boiler maintenance, gate and chain link fencing, athletic uniforms, athletic equipment reconditioning, purchase a CNC router machine, and use hard drive for education instruction with the earth. We also approved the resolution for the rejecting of a printing bid. We did discuss a couple of items. The Internal Audit is calling the NASTA on-site this week, and next week, the Board will audit on the Extracurricular Activities Fund. The new external audit is Horace Abrams, who will be performing their interim audit work next week. The printing bid that I mentioned for 2020-2021 was rejected due to the cost being over budget. It was nearly double what we had anticipated. The new bid will go out this week. This bid is for printing and mailing for district budget notice newsletters, Health and Wellness Newsletter, Health Education, and the district newsletter, which are jobs that our in-house services cannot handle. And the meeting adjourned at 7:30.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Mr. McCann will discuss the meeting of the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Thank you, Mr. McGellar. Good evening, everyone. The Buildings and Grounds Committee met on Tuesday, May 4th, at 7:30 p.m. All board and committee members were in attendance, and administrators in attendance, with Mrs. Burn, Mrs. Pilati, Mrs. Morrison, Mr. Taylor, and Mr. Bossy. Several items were discussed. We've got an update on the bond projects. The bond is still moving along nicely, the bond from several years ago. We're still doing projects with that. We've got some work to do on the speed bump repairs on the Alliance path. Some of those were damaged during the snowstorm in cleanup. We've got tennis court cracks in some tennis courts at Udall that we've repaired. We talked about the fence along the library fields. That's part of the capital improvement budget that we'll float on in two weeks to replace that fence. There's a lot of maintenance on that fence. The next item we discussed was permits for all summer camps and all the different activities that we offer here in the district in the summer, whether it's an outside group or internally run. Those permits are all good to go. One note on that is that there's a lot of questions about COVID protocols. Obviously, we'll follow all the COVID protocols, and schools have a little enhanced protocols than some other outside groups that are outside schools and districts. All the protocols that happen on school grounds are a little bit different, so sometimes it's confusing about that. But we'll be following all those guidelines, and we'll start to see flyers and camps come out for the summer. So, great to hear that normal is coming back to that degree, and nice to see all those activities open for the children. We did do an update on Mecera. We, I know there's been a lot of talk around what's happening there. We, as mentioned in the last meeting, we have two prospective potential lease opportunities. We had negotiated with the first prospective tenant. Proposal was offered, and we could not come to an agreement, and we are still in being explored with the second tenant. We, as a group and probably as a community, are not in a rush to do anything that's not in the best interest of everyone, the community financially. So, we're vetting these along the path very thoroughly. We want those best interests for everyone, including the residents, the community, and the tenant that's coming in. So we'll continue ongoing from there. If those don't pan out, we have mentioned that we would like to do a community forum to really solicit where we want to do with that facility. At this point, the facility is being maintained by our grounds crew. The fields are being used by our sports programs, so it's up and running. The playground's in use, and we're not in a rush to do that, but we are negotiating, and we'll keep everyone up to date as that comes about. And that's it. The meeting adjourned at 7:45, and the vote continues.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. And Mr. Compatello will discuss the Special Education Committee meeting.
Good evening. I'll keep it brief. The special appointment you met at 08:30 on the 7th of May is being conducted by telephone conference call. Members present, Ms. Dowling, Ms. Morrison, Ms. Doherty, and myself. We discuss special education assignments throughout the district, and I grant support for all the required special education CSDs and annual reviews of proceedings as scheduled and should be completed shortly, with security at 08:55.
So for those of you that are not regular attendees, that was Mr. Compatello's version of a joke, when he said that he's going to keep it brief, because as a general rule, he doesn't give me enough time even to take a sip of water. So, brief as is middle name. Thank you, Mr. Compatello. And back to Mr. McCann for the meeting of the Health and Wellness Committee.
Thank you, Mr. McGellar. The Health and Wellness Committee met virtually on April 13th at 10:00 a.m. There were 14 members in attendance. We reviewed the financial report. We reviewed our newsletter that hopefully everyone received within the last month, the Health and Wellness Newsletter. A lot of that focused around articles about COVID and COVID and dealing with COVID. We picked a tentative date for the color run, to do it in person, as long as all COVID protocols are followed, and hopefully the world is in a better shape, on October 17th, Sunday. For those of you who haven't done the color run before, it's a great community activity. It's a fun run where you get color thrown on you, and you go home, and you clean your kids for three or four days. Kids love it. I love it. The parents love it, and it's a great fundraiser and a great day to be out running with the community. So we're looking to do that October 17th, barring any other restrictions, but we think that we will pull that off. We talked about the Health and Wellness scholarships that are out there. We talked about the Mindful Parent Workshop in the beginning. You know, during COVID, we had mentioned that we'd like to not only offer health and wellness and mental health workshops for our children in the schools and virtually, we also offer them to parents. So there was a Mindful Parent Workshop on Thursday, April 15th. For those of you who haven't attended it, they're wonderful meetings. Our next meeting is Tuesday, May 11th. It's Tuesday at 10:00 a.m., and we look forward to seeing everyone there. We did have a lot of talk about all the sports and activities that are back in the schools. So if anyone has drove by, drove down Lions path around 3 o'clock on any given weekday, you see hundreds of children, hundreds of athletes on the fields. You see clubs going on. You see some of the music opened up. That really gives us a sense that we're coming back a little to normal, but I can tell you, coming from two different fields right before this meeting, it's just a wonderful thing to see for everybody in the town. So, we talk about health and wellness. It's alive and well on those fields and in those clubs, and we're just happy that it's all back and coming back to normal. So, meeting was adjourned at, and our next meeting is Tuesday, May 11th, virtually at 10:00.
Thank you, Mr. McGellar. On the color run.
Color run is October 17th, Sunday.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. And Mrs. Pilati will discuss financial matters and business items.
Thank you, Mr. McGellar. The Treasury's report for the month of March had a beginning balance of $63,540,353.35 and an ending balance of $76,364,597.19. May I have a motion for the approval of budget transfers 4047 through 4051 for the General Fund and 4052 for the Capital Fund?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the contracts and agreements as listed on the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the surplus JVC compact disc stereo system at Manitoc Elementary School?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of a 2020-21 Health Services contract for Deer Park UFF State?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of 2021-22 bids as listed on the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resolution for the rejection of the printing bid?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pilati. Can I have a motion for the approval of personnel for the annual meeting, school budget vote, and trustee election on May 18th? So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the approval of the Peensters Local 237 Clerical MOA regarding summer hours? So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion for the approval of the memorandum of agreement regarding retirement with White? So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. McGellar. So as Mr. Tussi pointed out, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and next week, we would typically celebrate National School Nurses Day. As you can imagine, those two groups have done enormous work this school year to make as normal an experience as possible for our students. Due to the restrictions that have been imposed until recently, we've moved our official district recognition to our June meeting this year in anticipation of being able to accommodate more people. However, I would be remiss if I did not share my great appreciation for all that our teachers and nurses have done this year to get us up and running and to keep us running day in and day out. I speak with colleagues from other districts, you know, and when I tell them that our kids have been back virtually since the end of September, and now we've gotten our high school kids back in full, and I'm very proud to say that, and I don't want to jinx us, but let me just say that if you don't get a Parents Square message from me, we have no COVID cases in the district that day. So I like not sending them out in the afternoon. But again, thank you to all of our teachers and our nurses. I really think that we cannot express our appreciation enough this weekend, every day, for bringing some sense of normalcy to the children in the district. So again, thank you. We have had a number of Honor Society induction ceremonies recently, all virtual, of course. On April 14th, Advisor Annette Mysterick presided over the induction of 41, and that's a lot, of students into the National Art Honor Society. You can check out the video, which is on the High School Media Events page. Additionally, the Art Department will host a virtual art show on the day of the budget vote, May 18th. You may remember that typically, we would run Celebrate Education on that day, and we are limited in that regard this year, but do check out the district website for more information. Our high school will be fully remote on that day, although our teachers and staff will be forward to work, because we do anticipate a large number of people exercising their right to vote, and it does impose on the immediate area where we do have children regularly in the building. We will be fully remote for our high school students on May 18th. Last month, B Street Middle School, under the leadership of Advisors Christine McCann and Teresa Robertson, inducted 82 students into the National Junior Honor Society. Udall Road Middle School followed with the recognition of 69 students in the National Junior Honor Societies. So we thank those advisors and Danielle Dishy, who is the advisory at Udall, for guiding those students through the process. Very well deserved for all of those students that have really, despite all of the challenges of this year, have demonstrated their leadership, their scholarship, their civil mindedness, and their character. We're also proud to announce that two of our high school juniors, Lily Colonna and Emma Musial, have met the requirements to enter the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. have met the requirements to enter the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. We have a couple of other students here with the men in Ditterantos. So we're really quite proud of all of them. It's not often that we have as many recipients in that regard. Of the 1.5 million entrants, about 50,000 with the highest scores qualified for the recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. So in September, they will be notified through their schools. We'll let them know if they've qualified as either commended students or semifinalists. But whatever the result, it is quite an honor for both students and for the district. So the administrative team continues to discuss our end of year activities to recognize our students who are moving on from fifth or eighth or 12th grades. And today, Dr. Bridgman shared the exciting news that our high school seniors will enjoy their prom on Thursday, June 24th at the Sands Atlantic Beach. Graduation will be celebrated the next day, likely in two ceremonies. We are hopeful that the gathering limits will change, but at present, we must follow the, you know, requirements that were set forth on April 27th by the Department of Health. So we will hold two ceremonies on June 25th for high school graduation, one at 4:00 and one at 6:30. That's all tentative except the date. Hopefully, we don't have rain. But we are going to be sending out further information about both the prom and the high school graduation very shortly. The middle schools are each planning a moving up ceremony for the eighth grade students, likely but not confirmed yet on June 23rd. Since a regents exam will be held in the morning, school will not be in session on that day for sixth and seventh grade students. The only date school cannot be in session for a group of students is if a regents exam is being administered. This year, there are only four regents exams being administered. So the state expects schools to be in session every other day. But on the 23rd, we are administering a regents exam to our eighth graders. So that seems like the reasonable day if we end up having those types of ceremonies. We will hold ceremonies in the afternoon and into the evening. If we go the ceremony route in the auditorium, it is likely that the building, beach, and Udo will have to hold three to four ceremonies respectively each due to the limits right now. It's all in the fine print. For all events, the number of attendees would be limited to two per student for primarily outdoor events, but in the case of the middle school, that indoor event. But we are at this point just grateful that we're able to move forward with any kind of in-person activities. The principals continue to hear from those advocating for different formats for the fifth grade moving up ceremonies. Therefore, our fifth grade parents can expect to receive a survey from the district tomorrow, actually from each of your individual buildings. So this will give each building the opportunity to determine the preferred format for their building for whatever fifth grade ceremony will be held. It's important for everyone to understand the implications of each type of ceremony, which will be explained in detail on the survey form. For example, fifth school is in session for our K-5 students. An indoor ceremony would be limited to the students and no guests. And that would be, we would be able to celebrate with all of the students together at one time, but unfortunately, we would not be able to accommodate guests. An outdoor ceremony would include two guests per child, but would require a number of ceremonies within each building depending on the size of the classes. Car parade, of course, would be most inclusive of all guests. But there is a number of people that feel that that's not the preferred format. And that's fine. Everybody is, you know, certainly has their own opinion. And we are willing to listen to all of those opinions. So we will get the survey tomorrow via Parents Square. We do plan to turn around the results very quickly, hopefully by next week. So the closing date will be pretty quick. It'll come up on us on either Monday or Tuesday. So as soon as you get that survey, if you would provide your opinion, we would be greatly appreciated. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Burks. Okay, just reminders that the West Side Council of PTA is hosting Meet the Candidate Night for the prospective school board candidates on Monday, this coming Monday. If you need that information, I believe you can get it on their Facebook page. It will be held virtually. In addition, of course, the vote for trustees as well as the school budget will be held on May 18th in the high school.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher, well, the link also, the PTA has asked us to place the link for the Meet the Candidate Night on our district website, and it is there on the spreadsheet. So you can find it there as well.
Thank you. Okay, Jonathan Delano.
So I'm talking about the, I refer to them as the COVID cubicles, the plexiglass dividers. I'm currently a high school senior resident. I graduated in the month. I think they are unnecessary and detrimental to the learning environment. They are a pretty big distraction as they kind of cause the light from the windows and the smart boards to be reflected. And you can't really see anything. You also can't hear anything when you're in them. So what students do, because they can't hear or see anything, is they kind of poke their heads around them, take their masks off to talk. The masks work. So when they remove their masks to talk, that kind of spreads the coronavirus. You know, the dividers are only in front. They're not really in the side. So the person sitting in front of me has their back to me and their eyes and mouth and nose aren't facing me. So they're not going to catch the coronavirus unless I spit on the back of their head and then they touch their head. And then the nose, the face, like, just doesn't really make much sense of the people to the left and right of me when I look at them and have their face to me. There is no divider there, so it's kind of pointless, in my opinion. The CDC also removed the recommendation for them. So the CDC said, "You don't need them anymore. It's just a board." A lot of the teachers don't like them. Some of the teachers have kind of taken it amongst themselves to say, "You don't need them." I know the board still says that they're required. But in my opinion, they're kind of silly. University studies also show that they do not actually mitigate the spread of the coronavirus as, you know, the particles propagate in three dimensions and they're very, you know, minimal. They definitely make it harder to hear and see though. And that's basically it. But they're pretty useless and they make learning more difficult. I don't really know why we use them. The studies show they didn't work. And they make learning pretty challenging. It's basically it.
Jonathan, thank you. We are constantly reevaluating that particular intervention. You know, one of the things is when the state, when the CDC makes the rules, they make it for, you know, a broad group of people, pretty much across the country. When the New York State Department of Health makes the rules, they make it for the entire state. And what's going on here may be very different than what's going on, say, in Buffalo or Blacksburg or someplace else. Our local Suffolk County Department of Health, from which we take our direction, has really asked us to be cautious because many districts have gone to less than six feet, which in that case, they're not necessarily saying remove what is these guards, the barriers. However, we do go back. The teachers have expressed concerns. You know, we're constantly looking at that situation and we'll keep our eye on that at this point in time. If the numbers continue the way they are, I think it's worthy of another discussion. Because we've been in good shape so far.
Thank you, Jonathan. Christine Carraciola.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Christine Carraciola and I am a teacher at Paul J. Bulloom School. From here tonight, it's all the only half of the faculty, staff, and students there at that school. As you are aware, there have been a significant number of cases of breast cancer at our school. We exact that there's been five in the last five years. To us at Paul J. Bulloom, that is a big concern. I brought this matter to the attention of Mr. Brian Taylor back in early November and then again to the superintendent, Lieutenant Alvin Forman, later that month. One of the concerns that we have is that all five of those women, including myself, have a significant risk of a broken knee, which means it's not correct. And where does it come from? Somewhere most likely in the environment. As you know, those three things relate were articles from the state to West Side High School, Beach Street Middle School, and the Whitehead Middle School. And as you also know, through the irrigation that they did on the soil and the water in both locations, chromium to cadmium to cancer pleasant agents were found in both locations. Mr. Taylor has agreed to bring all of this information to the Suffolk County Department of Health, who in turn referred this case to the New York State Department of Health. After being very patient for six months, Mr. Taylor received a report from the New York State Department, which many of us feel is inconclusive. The report states that there is no direct link between the case of breast cancer at Paul J. Bulloom and Willow Street. How they can make that decision that impacts the lives of so many, without even a visit to the school campus, doing any testing, or reaching out to the board of the nation, does not sit well with many of us at Paul J. Bulloom. To be honest, it's hard for us to understand that the Department of Health did all they can do for us. We are asking that the board look further into the situation so the Paul J. Bulloom family can feel more at ease about coming to work each and every day. Perhaps maybe the air, the water, or even the black swivv that she gets out of the ground here is kind of contested. On behalf of the Paul J. Bulloom community, please get our concerns and stand behind us in trying to get more definitive answers to the many questions that the council may not answer. Thank you.
We'll discuss it further. Thank you. Karen Carroll. Karen, would it embarrass you if I told everyone you go to Harvard?
I was going to say it anyway, but...
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm also a current senior at high school. And I'm also a president of the next 2021 and a president of students then as well. So as many of you are aware, there's been a bit of help for today of how my graduate was receiving prom. And as Mrs. Burks mentioned, it was publicized earlier today that fully students from West Side High School will be allowed to attend. Much of the other families can attend, but many students are doing a lot of spring outside dates. So what I'm hoping to propose is that even if it isn't provisionally possible in the end to accommodate outside dates, we do what we can with the very, very urgency to kind of figure out numbers and, you know, to best rather than maybe, not maybe ever, to address those movement global issues. So the first thing we need to do really is completely decline the amount of people that we allow. COVID restrictions are already painted and as such, on May 10th, the limit for outdoor events in New York State will increase to 500 people. On May 19th, the indoor limit will increase to 250. So these limits, as I said, can still change, but they're actually something we can work with at the moment. I've been to the prom venue. We visited with the place 2021 Board in fall 2019 before we go to prom. And as such, I know we have, venue has plenty of seats outdoors. And that is primarily the spot where all we can picture before prom. So I think it's simply the reason that portion of attendees can be outside while others are inside during the event. You just have to recap the venue and kind of make sure that's possible. Now, I don't know if that's necessarily possible, but the event can be, or the limit, the event can be split between the indoor and outdoor limits, which say the limit is 250 and 500. That would be 375. And if we get on the side of Paul, then we could say 350. So just very, we're just believing the facts. I think the graphic list is 313 kids. And compared realistically, they have to have 250 to 275 that actually go to prom. So after that, then you have to account for administration and chaperones and the venue staff, which I would think would be about 50 people, and that's the potential for outside dates, which kind of puts you out around with 350 on that image. This is all very, very cutthroat. So with current limits, and it's imperative that we remain inside, the timing is meant. I recognize that it's unlikely we'll have enough space to accommodate desired outside dates. But we can still figure out the numbers. And I'd be happy to set up some kind of poll for the place 2021. Preferably, we fill that and resolve by the next Monday or Tuesday. And I have to know who exactly was bringing outside date, who that date is, and how to confirmate other dates, confirmation of a vaccine, or vaccination to this date, or confirmation of the COVID testing when we ask for 2021. But right now, the least we can do is communicate to venue and see their overall numbers. Then if things are still completely unfeasible, we thought all we can do, it's pretty delicate to prom at all. But on the other hand, it could simply be someone's job on prom night to run a digital count of the amount of students inside and outside. Is this a slight inconvenience? Sure. Yeah, obviously, but somebody would be able to do it. On the other hand, I could set up the poll that I mentioned with the place 2021. Another slight inconvenience, but that would do it. So hopefully, the most important thing to consider, I think, is whether you'd rather have a very vocal and very persistent group of seniors who are kind of angered about half the less important thing that senior year didn't wait enough or a couple of slight inconvenience. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Mr. Gallagher, if I could just take a minute to address Mrs. Carraciola's comments. First of all, very sorry to hear that you had to go through that experience. But I just want to let you know that we have discussed this and it's something that has touched my life very personally, being a West Side resident for 50 years. My wife was also a teacher in the district, has gone through breast cancer 10 years ago. We struggled with trying to understand why, how did this happen, where did it come from? And, you know, I'm in the healthcare profession outside here, outside the school board. And there's so many unanswered questions that we have ourselves. And we've tried to find them. It's a very difficult subject to approach. But, you know, we've discussed it and we are definitely compassionate with what you've gone through and appreciate the fact that, you know, we all like answers to any of the things that happen. You know, my wife had gone through it 10 years ago. I also lost my sister-in-law to it at age 40, also a West Side resident with three children in the district. So very, it touches our hearts. And I just want to let you know that we sympathize with everything that you and all the people that suffer from that disease go through. And we certainly take a look at what we can.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Dorian Scorzos.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Dorian Scorzos. I'm the vice president of the PTA. And that responsibility with the board that Karen was formally telling us about, I found the need to come and address the situation as well. I know Harvard, Harvard hopeful, I'm not going to the middle school, so...
We're going to Northridge. And Dorian, you do, you do...
It's accomplishment.
It is.
Yeah, I'm not going to Harvard, okay.
And Dorian, you do a great job on the PTA, on the High School PTSA meeting.
Well, as I was saying, Karen covered most of what I was planning to say. There's just a little bit more to cover. I recently was told by another student who experienced the same that in order to go to prom, you either need a vaccine or an antibody test. And this accounts for most people. But if I or one of my peers got COVID and they get COVID now and next week, we could be perfectly fine by the time prom starts and perfectly healthy with antibodies. However, we could still get a positive COVID test due to the nature of how the tests work. And first and foremost, I wanted to know if it's possible that the district would provide antibody tests for people that are in that situation, type of situation? Because if we do the same for them, they battle COVID, they got through it, now they can go to prom just because there's still types of positive, even though they have antibodies. Just a small request, and I hope you guys can make possible.
Thank you, Dorian. We'll take that one down.
So, Mr. Taylor, just correct me if I'm wrong, but if somebody has a COVID test, would they be under the same guidance as the athletic guidance, which is that they do not need to test?
Correct.
If they have to test a positive?
If a student can provide a positive COVID result within 90 days of the prom, then they would not be required to test at all.
Oh, that's a different thing.
But just bear in mind the logistics of collecting, and you all pointed it out really well, all of the data that the district needs to collect in that regard. As far as an antibody test goes, you can go to LabCorp or any one of the other, you know, local labs. And they will provide testing, in some cases free of charge, in some cases on your parents' insurance policies. But it's a relatively simple process. So if that's something you're interested in doing, just for the sake of knowing, you can do that as well.
But you have to be careful. The Department of Health Services does not recognize an antibody test alone because your antibody, you could be showing antibodies having been exposed six months ago. So you really, the student would need to provide a positive COVID test within 90 days of the date of the prom.
Okay, thank you. I'll transmit that to people who need that.
Okay, Jeanette, is that Sharon Hoffman or Hoffman?
Hoffman, yes.
Hoffman?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette Hoffman. I'm the parent of a fifth grader at Manitok Elementary School. Mrs. Burks covered pretty much what my question was, but I just wanted to thank the board and... and Mrs. Burns for hearing us and, you know, letting us have a voice, you know, for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoffman. Allison Roman.
Likewise, thank you, Mrs. Burns, for addressing us and hearing us. I was the one who spoke last time at the board meeting. You stole my stats on the numbers that are going up, but I did have a question and clarification. I may have just missed it. When you said you were going to send the survey, is it the majority rules, or are you going to take the results and then make a decision from there?
We met with the principals earlier today, and it would be basically majority rules, but it would be by building, because each building has very much different opinions about what they would like to see. Although each building, we try to be as consistent as possible across the district, but consistency is that the children should be celebrated in some way, shape, or form, but how each building does it, that goes to the culture of the building and what the expectations are.
I would think, I was on a meeting with Mrs. Williams on a different matter, and she took her time afterwards to meet with me, even though I had not contacted her and listened to some of the things that I had, some of the ideas, and I want all of you to know, I really respected her for reaching out to me when I had not done the same, and I found her to be very open to hearing all the possibilities and ideas that we had to offer. I know she's new to the district, but I was very impressed with her.
She's awesome, right?
Yes. And we miss you, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Debbie Brown.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Debbie Brown. I was also looking for an update on the right-of-passage events for the kids for the end of the year, so thank you, Mrs. Burns, for providing that. I'm really excited to hear that events, you know, appear to be going forward. I also want to thank you all for getting the kids back to school in a very progressive and cautious manner. My kids are thrilled to be back. It's great to see everybody back in high school, and I think it's great that the seniors are here tonight advocating for yourselves. I think that's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ready on cards?
I'm just going to jump in here before we go to that part, Ms. Gallagher, if you don't mind, just to, just to kind of also just say that we want as much as we can give to the community and the kids to celebrate for the end of the year. That's our purpose, just like it was getting everybody back to school. So we need to push those limits as far as those limits will go and still stay within the guidelines of keeping everybody safe. So whether that be, you know, what kind of ceremony that looks like for the fifth graders or bringing a date to the prom, you know, we have time, right? We have time. Every day is something new and something changes. And I say that because I also had messages from moms of seniors asking me to, you know, ask about bringing, you know, that plus one that is not a senior and is so important to the children and the students, and I get it. I get it. My daughter graduated college last year and did not get a college graduation, sorry, honey, and that's horrible. And so we want to make it work as much as possible, so you're working hard.
As I, as I, thank you, Mrs. Rosa. As I said last, last month, you know, we do have, of course, have responsibility to adhere to the state guidelines, which we will do, but at the same time, we will do everything we can to make sure that kids all have the best experience possible and all know that we think each and every one of you is special, which you are. So we keep our eye on it and keep changing it as much as we can be changing. Mr. Diebold.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, as you were aware, I just received favorable decision from my client asserting, supporting the fact that the district denied a student with a disability a free or twelve-year public education. I'm here tonight to serve you, with notice to seek review, because I'm seeking additional relief through the SRO, and we will be seeking additional relief through the court system, the filing, filing and suing each and every one of you sitting up there, except Miss LaRosa, for $1.5 million in professional and personal capacity for showing deliberate indifference regarding a student with a disability. Here is the service, and then I will come back to the microphone. Additionally, I don't expect to be cut off in three minutes, because you have been extending other people's, you have been extending other people's times, and you cannot, you can quote Robert's Rules all you want, you cannot practice and implement...
You're wasting your time.
And I'm not going to run out of time, because you went past the three minutes for another gentleman, okay? And if you, in an arbitrary and capricious matter, if you don't let me speak because you don't like what I'm saying, I'm going to sue you for that. So first, I'm going to give the clerk the service. I'm giving the clerk the service. I'm serving, my sir. You can't have it my way if you didn't serve.
Mr. Diebold, you're on thin ice, Mr. Diebold.
I don't have to go. You can't exit.
You will conduct yourself in an courteous, professional manner.
Sir, are you going to, are you turning me off and telling me to leave?
I'm telling you, if you do not...
Are you telling me to leave?
...in a courteous manner, you will be asked...
I don't have to go. You're not a law enforcement officer. Come on, I'm not going to suck you. Call 911, please. Call 911, maybe. You just touched me. You just touched me. I'm not going. You pushed me against me. Everyone look, the security guard is not law enforcement. I have a right to speak.
Gentlemen, guys, you guys...
You're looking for a lawsuit, Tom.
Mr. Diebold, you may continue as long as you remain courteous. If you are not...
I'm trying, I can't hear you with the security guard, sir.
You have a period of time allotted.
Tom, I cannot do that with the security guard.
Guys, go, go.
What? Have I allowed the speed to handle it?
As I said, if you continue in a courteous manner, you will be allowed to speak to your time limit is up.
Okay. I lost time, the security guard got between me, and I served you, which I'm well entitled to do.
You lost time because you pontificated. You have a minute.
Additionally, comes to my, it has come to my attention that Tom Valls' law firm is representing your school district for educational matters as well as employee matters. That is, in some instances, could be viewed as a conflict of interest. I let him know about that. How could a parent assert something against the school district and an employee, and him defend it in a special education case, and still represent the district employee matters? In, in middle country, there are two different attorneys, one for the board matters and one for, and one for employee matters. That's common practice, okay? So basically, I'm telling him that he has to file a 320, and he goes, "That's her opinion, and we're bringing complaints against administrators at school," and he's like, "No," because he doesn't want to implicate them in the other matters that he's charged to represent the district.
Okay, Mr. Diebold, your time is up.
Thank you very much. We'll see you next time. I have more papers to serve you with, sir.
Look forward to it.
We'll also be holding a demonstration in front of your house. A few of these women and kids, that's all we're fighting.
You do have to leave, and you are leaving now.
I am not leaving.
Gentlemen?
I don't need to have a lot of patience. What do you want?
Feel free.
What do you want? Wait, you forced me out. Did a way, step back. Tom, I agree, I don't want to be a free spirit. Because if anything, I'm in control.
Mr. Diebold, you can stay if you're not disruptive, but you are being extremely disruptive at half. If you're not disruptive. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session when we discuss negotiations, rotation, and personnel?
So moved.
All in favor?
Got it.
motion down. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Have a good...
Thank you.